Roll call for the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, September 2nd, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones is absent, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes from the City Council Meeting of August 19th, 2015, and bills for payment on September 4th and 11th, 2015, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Are there any requests for repository sales this morning? Are there any requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we will now go to the citizens to be heard. And we have two citizens who have signed up to speak this morning. Mr. Randy Barnes is first on the agenda.
Let me just set my timer here. Good morning, Council, President, Administration, staff, guests. My name is Randy Barnes. My topic is $81,732 free coffee, friends and family. I have to admit to you, I've been speaking to you for nearly a year, very misinformed. I got the impression when we hired former city clerk, Mr. James Clem, to preserve these records, there was actually some work to be done. But thankfully, there was a report done two weeks ago and an article in the paper that says the work to be done to supervise these records being archived is basically making a phone call. These records are all on film. I didn't realize that. I thought we had stacks of parchment paper that we had to go through and preserve. These are all on film. So what Mr. Clem, for $12,000 a year, what he does, he calls up Pirlo on Parade Street and says, "Come and get this film." I don't know, but 20, 30 seconds worth of supervision. But what's interesting is, when Mr. Clem was earning his salary here and working toward his pension, he found the time to do the records from 1980 on, while he was working. So it was confusing to me, and I guess anybody would look at this closer than, well, if he had time to do it when he was the city clerk, to call Pirlo and say, "Come and get this film," why wouldn't the current city clerk or staff have time to pick the phone up, say, "Pirlo, come and get this film?" Because that's what it takes. There is no supervision. There is nobody working that Mr. Clem is supervising. He basically makes a phone call and says, "Come and get the film," and they do the digitizing of it. So this joke of this Mr. Clem working so hard, all this work being done, and I guess the council knew it, or else you were all buffaloed also, that there was a lot of work to be done. It was a phone call. Come and get the film, digitize these records. And for that, we're paying $1,000 a month. But then we go on to find out that he's been helping write resolutions, ordinances. What's really scary is, at the end of the year, the most senior person on council is no longer on council. If we can't do it with over 40-some years of experience on council, how can we do it when we lose a person that has 12 years' experience at the end of the year? How can we write these ordinances and resolutions? Well, we probably can't. We're probably going to have to have Mr. Clem on infinitum. I mean, because we can't write a resolution or an ordinance without paying a retiree $1,000 bucks a month, can we? I mean, admit it. I mean, you're seven people, you were elected to do a job. You can't write a resolution or an ordinance. And then we go on to say, "Well, Mr. Clem has been advising you on contracts." This is almost like the, "Are you smarter than a lawyer?" This is the episode that plays, I guess, after citizens be heard. "Are you smarter than a lawyer?" Because Mr. Clem told you that, "Oh, you can reject contracts." And four of you decided to reject a contract. But are we smarter than a lawyer? We had this city lawyer give us an opinion. We had a private attorney give somewhat of an opinion on television, made a comment. But yet, we went, four people went by what Mr. Clem said. Because he's a 47-year employee of the county, of City Hall, earns the largest pension ever, so that makes him an expert on contract administration. So he advised you that you can reject that, and four of you voted to reject it. So we're going to have another redo today. It's like a do-over. Now that we have the lawyers weighing in, we have Mr. Clem on one side saying, "It's okay, council, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Jones, it's okay to reject that contract." We have him weighing on one side, and we have the city attorney, who went to law school, became an attorney, has worked for the city quite some time, gave an opinion. So we get down to the final moment here in 10 or 15 minutes. Are we smarter than an attorney? And I guess that's up to the seven council people decide up there. Are we smarter than these attorneys? Because we've been elected, we're smart enough to give Mr. Clem $12,000 a year to make a phone call, basically because he's our friends and family, remember, it's the old friends and family plan. Because Mr. Clem's a good friend of several of you, and that was Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, and Ms. Rancunzo, voted to give this man $1,000 a month to come down and write resolutions, write ordinances, and the big thing was, call Pirlo and say, "Hey, come and get the film for us." About a 20, 30-second phone call, but yet the taxpayers are going to pay $24,000 for that phone call. Because nobody else down here in City Hall can call up Pirlo. "Mr. Pirlo, come and get the film." Pretty simple, wasn't it? But yet, we're going to pay this man another $8,000 to $9,000, and maybe even extend the contract, so. Again, it's just one little sign of how close we are of council. How does council destroy a city? One vote at a time. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Maurice Foley. Are you here today? One more chance, is Maurice Foley here today? He had signed up for the agenda. I don't see him, so we will go on with the citizens to be heard. If anyone would like to speak, please come to the podium, give your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Julia Kalapov. I live at 437 East 11th Street. And I'm here to speak about a few different issues. One is the fact that we suffered a fire in February, and we are still homeless and displaced. Our insurance company at the time was Allstate. They are rated the worst insurance company in the nation. Many families in Erie are homeless or displaced or denied by Allstate. And I'm seeking out those people to try to create a Facebook page in regard to the way that they're being treated, the way that they paid into their claims, and aren't being serviced after the fact for car accidents or home issues, or whatever the situation may be. I have bumper stickers out there that say, "Dump Allstate, your life depends on it." And one day, your life may depend on it, because my kids and I have been suffering for six months now and still have no stable place. And this is compounded by the fact that the one place that we have lived is 437 East 11th, and it's been declared blighted by the city of Erie. In my appeal to the redevelopment authority, I cited that it is not blighted, that I have repairs to do. And that date is September 17th, is when I go before the Erie redevelopment authority to explain how I'd like to rehab this property so we don't have to be homeless. In the meantime, we're stuck in purgatory. We're stuck in limbo between being homeless and having kind of a house, whatever the situation may be. And the city is seeking to take away our house. I can't pay bills. I can't buy supplies for repairs. I can't weatherize. I'd like to get tested for lead, because I have two kids under age six, can't get tested for lead, because I'm in limbo and I'm declared blighted. So, I mean, what do you do? I mean, you know, you're here between a rock and a hard place, trying to do the best thing for your family, and there's so many barriers, you know, in between all of that. And next to me is a house that had caught on fire at 435 East 11th, which I spoke about the last time I was here. Well, the code officer, Mr. Lombardi, was in the neighborhood just yesterday, taking pictures of the houses across the street, taking pictures of my house. Well, you're not supposed to take pictures unless somebody gives a call to the code office. That's what the statute states. A citizen or a concerned party has to call code, they have to file a complaint, they go out, they do their due diligence. However, only the houses that are habitated, as in lived in by people, are being targeted by the code office and the Erie redevelopment authority at the 11th and Parade Street area. And I'd like to know why, what the grand scheme is, if they're going to bulldoze them and build those $85,000 houses, that, you know, which is predatory lending, because you can't sell a house for $85,000 on 11th and Parade, so you shouldn't buy it for $85,000 on 11th and Parade. So the issue is, I'd like to know why the vacant houses haven't been stickered with orange stickers? Why the firehouse next door that has roaches and bedbugs and rodents and cats living in it? Why it hasn't been stickered? Why it hasn't been bulldozed? Why it's still collapsing onto my property, but my property is blighted? You know, these are the situations, and these are the questions that need to be answered. And I need somebody up there to at least please help me by making phone calls or showing some concern in regard to the way that people are being treated here in the city. You know, we need 500 more people here. We need a big apartment complex, is what we need. The mayor wants his funding, build an apartment complex, and that will handle all that right there. You know? I just, I really don't understand it. I don't. And we've got money for everything else, but we don't have money for me to live next to a house that's not going to fall on my children. I don't comprehend that. You know, we have a, and to speak about this Humane Society thing, the Humane Society euthanizes 2/3 of all the animals that they receive. There's nothing humane about that. Okay? We have the Anna Shelter here, they're going to speak today, and there's other citizens going to speak about the issue. But you're paying somebody to euthanize 2/3 of all the animals. You're paying for a contract that charges $50 a puppy to donate puppies. So let's say you have a litter of six puppies, and you want to donate them to the Humane Society. You have to pay $50 a puppy, last that I knew, to donate them. Then, once you pay that $50, the people on the other end, in the back door, have to pay $150 to adopt it. So there's no incentive to give money to the Humane Society, because they're killing all the pets anyway. We're not trying to gawk them out. So I would ask for a shorter term limit on at least the Humane Society contract also, even though that detracts from my initial statement. Thank you so much.
Ms. Kalapov, I did, I will get back to you. I did make some phone calls after you spoke last time, and I'll contact you as soon as I can.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street. First of all, I'd like to commend the young lady who just spoke. It takes a lot of courage to come down here, poor people living in poor neighborhoods in Erie, speaking up to you, looking for help from you. The majority of youth and people in our community are good people. You know them, they've just fallen on tough times, many of them. It would be nice to know that the government, those that are elected to represent you, are fighting for you, by the public positions that they take. I'd like to know what the demographic information is of these public projects that are underway in our community today, like the EMTA, the hotel, the various road construction projects, and the things that the authorities are doing. I'd like to see if they're providing employment and training opportunities for people you represent, for people who live in the city. I'd like to see what their race is and their gender, what zip code they live in. And I would like to know if those, some of one of you would help us find out that information. Because I believe it's connected to this field of hopelessness that people experience in our community today, from getting little things like that done, to just having everyday hope. Some of the violence by these children and grandchildren of Erie's chronic children in poverty has affected 60% to 70% of black youth and Latino youth, almost 85% to 90% of new American youth of color. From where you sit, it appears that you don't see or feel their pain and desperation. No hope hurts. We pay for it, all over the place. When you have no job, and no money, and no opportunity of any, and the people who represent you say they don't know what to do, they don't know what to do, it's not a good sign for those people. The status quo cannot be sustained. And the police cannot be the only approach. We have great leadership in the police department. I think the police are doing a good job. But the thing we all know is, they can't do it by themselves. And they don't just need people to give them information, they need to have a good relationship with the police and community. But that's still only one way. If we hire 30 more police, the people in Erie still won't feel any safer. And I feel like we should hire more police, but I think we should do other things also. You had an opportunity with the Community Development Block Grant Program to do some of those things, and you chose not to exercise your power. And by your vote, you consented it to the mayor's one-sided plan. And then today, you fight over a $25,000 contract over dogs. What are the people, like the lady who came here, to think? What are we to think? When the mayor says that law enforcement is the priority of the city of Erie, that seems we all need it, but is, do you all, is that what City Council says too? Is that your priority of what the, what the community needs? That doesn't address the hopelessness that's rampant in our community, that's fueling the violence. A curfew won't solve it. I think, I predict, it's going to instigate good people and further decrease the good relationship that the police already maintain by interacting more with good kids behind a reason of, "What time is it? Where are you going?" The way they talk to them and all of that, that the enforcement does. And I just think, I'm looking for more out of council than that. It's clear, it's not coming from the administration, not by your general fund budget or your community development block grant budget, that you feel some kind of commitment to giving hope to people you represent throughout Erie. I hope and pray, I hope and pray, that some of you, again, will talk to John Haran, who has a program that the people who live in the public housing, they have hope, they feel safe. There's something that he's doing right with that. I think the city of Erie could do more of that. We don't have to look to Mississippi and Alabama and California for the solution, it's right here in Erie amongst us. Thank you for your time and attention. God bless you, and have a good day.
Morning, Council. Last time I was down here, we had a nice crowd.
Mr. McDonald, can you give your name and address?
Oh, y'all don't know me.
For the record, thank you.
You should dream about me. Really. Mr. McDonald, my property is 19th and Reed.
Thank you.
Is that good enough for you?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You know, y'all know you disappoint me. I'm very disappointed in you. You take that oath, and you want to sit up there, you want to be the heads, you want to be the fathers and the mothers, you want to be the leaders, you want to be the great When your tinder is up, up there, when you look back and think what you did, which you haven't did anything, what did you do for the people, for that money? I haven't paid my tax yet, my taxes are up, and I live in the ghetto. Taxes up. My taxes shouldn't be $50 a year, living in the ghetto around drug dealers. Y'all keep me awake at night, I can't sleep good, because you're not doing nothing. Here, you want to stop all these kids out there, for what? You're going to infuriate them. They're going to rebel. You jump from 12 o'clock to 10 o'clock. What kind of doing is that? That's some good kids out there, and you're going to make them bad. I see the police stopping kids, them kids don't like that. You watch and see. Y'all can't see no further than your nose, and if some of you can't see that far, you better, you need to put some police out there, on foot, walking. Every cop you see is either on a motorcycle or he's in a cruiser. When I was coming up, we had beat cops. One of these days, you're going to wish you put some more out there. You're going to wish you had some out there. The peoples don't trust the police as it is. They don't hardly want to talk to them. Some of them are so brutal, they better be glad they in Erie. If they was in Detroit, Cleveland, or Buffalo, New York, they'd be praying when it came time to go to work. They don't have to be brutal like that. You talk to peoples the way you want to be talked to. You treat peoples the way you want to be treated. But you all, you're not your own persons. You're slaves to the system. Whatever Joe tell you, you do. You jump to it, and that ain't the way to go. Joe didn't vote you in, the peoples voted you in. And some of you won't make it back. And some of you don't deserve to be up there. I'm not going to say all of you, because you got to be one or two good ones somewhere. But y'all disappoint me, but disappointing me, you couldn't care less. You're disappointing the kids, you're disappointing the taxpayers, and you're going to live to regret it. All the money go to the police department. Shame on you. You took money, money that you should have been getting jobs for them kids over the summer. You sent it to the police department. The police ain't everything. And then, after a while, you're not going to have enough police, but you're not utilizing what you got. Put some out there to pound that concrete, to talk to the people. Don't be afraid, they scared somebody going to shoot them or something. Y'all scared somebody going to shoot them or something. I'm, you know what? I'm surprised that what's been going on across the country, police haven't killed up somebody here. But God is a good God. He love y'all too, even though you're a bunch of liars up there. And you lie. You lie. Your mouth is not no prayer book. You should think, you should, you got to think. That's what God put that head up there for. And he has five senses, and some of you don't use it. You forget what you got up there. Remember, you're men and women, and you're supposed to make your own decisions. Don't let nobody else rule your head. Make your own decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard this morning?
Good morning. Chris Blackman. I was here the other night, and I just...
Your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. 3028 Court Avenue, Erie, really, Mill Creek. But first things I like to bring up are a few things, based on the fact that, from what I found out, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you can veto this because it's not an ordinance, first thing I'd like to say. Couple of statistics, because the only way we're going to get this bid for Anna is a fact that one has to be better than the other. And I have to say, I think down the road, the Humane Society will be a great place, but she needs time to work on it. They don't have a barn program, and right now, I can tell you five incidences I was involved in, where their, one area, Merle and them, tried to, when the Dormay Motel was closed out, that they went to this guy's house, and they kept harassing Jim Live about trapping him or bringing him there. You know they were going to be put down. And between Because You Care and us, and Dr. Ventrilo from Erie Animal, we trapped them all and found them a great barn. And I have five more. Right now, they just put a dog to sleep down by my house that was taken care of by these people for 10 years. Hope was involved in making sure it was well taken care of, and they came in and said, "Either you have to put it down." And Tim from Mill Creek went and took it and put it down for them. I've got five of those I was involved in. They have no vets, unless they tell me differently on their staff. The Anna Shelter has three absolutely incredible vets. I go there, I used to go to Camburl. They also have two clinics to provide anything that needs to be done. And my question is, what would they have done with something like Rocky? And if I could have, I would have brought my dog in, who was left in a ditch in Mill Creek and taken to us at Broken Arrow. And Lori Hurt, who is a helper, paid $4,000 to have that dog fixed, and it's eight years old and doing wonderful. What would they have done with that dog brought to them? I just want to read something that was on their website, which now they've removed after the last meeting that we had. It says, "The Humane Society reserves the right to refuse any animal that is sick, injured, requires medical attention, is of advanced age, or any other circumstances or condition, rendering or sheltering of the animal not in the best common interest." Now it's off their website. Maybe they've changed their mind. Let's see, what other thing? I think that's about all I have to say. I just, I think it comes down to who can do a better job. And down the road, I think if they work, and I think she's going to be wonderful, and within time, maybe she can prove and go back to what, what the, what's his face, Cruzanti, did a lot of damage to the Humane Society, to the city. People have lost trust in them. And as you've read on all the other articles from the last meeting, he was just at a party with some friends of mine, and pronounced how many animals they put to sleep all the time. So, and I think it's going to change, but I don't think they can handle the contract right now. And I think you need to vote on that, and not who's the lowest bidder for $25,000. Okay? And I really, one more thing I'll have to say, because I have five minutes to go. I think that the Anna Shelter can do a better job for the city financially, rather than, and it's on here too, you have to pay $35 to take an animal in, and then they put it to sleep and get the money from, you know, the city. So is that in your best interest versus Anna? And I, right now, even though I'm not with an organization anymore, I needed space and all that, I still have five kittens in my garage and a mother. I just took some to the Anna Shelter, they're absolutely wonderful. And I still get phone calls, and I'm still doing all of that along. But I go to the Anna Shelter because of their barn program and all that, trying to stop this horrible thing going on. Okay? Thank you. I hope you vote in the interest of the Anna Shelter for this time.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard this morning? Are there any other citizens to be heard? And one final time, is there any other citizens to be heard this morning? Seeing none, we'll continue the rest of the meeting. Ms. Roby?
All right. We have one item under Old Business.
She says, "We want to have an Old Business."
Resolution sponsored by Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Mrs. Rancunzo, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a two-year agreement to the Humane Society of Northwestern Pennsylvania, 2407 Zimmerley Road, Erie, PA 16506, for supplying animal shelter services according to bid number 6430 for the Bureau of Police for this, of the city of Erie, at a total cost of $22,000 per year. Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones.
No.
Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky.
Mr. President, can I speak before you?
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I'm voting no on this, but I wanted to explain myself and explain my rationale for why I'm voting no. My issue isn't with the Humane Society or with the Anna Shelter. My issue is why wasn't collection part of the bid, and the resources of the city. I said this last time about, we have to be wise stewards of the resources of the city of Erie. And in my opinion, this RFP did not take into account the fundamental question, why are our police officers doing this? Why isn't it in the RFP that collection was part of the contract? Why are we using our police resources? Why are we using our police resources? And why should the police be catching dogs when we should be protecting people? Especially given the times that we live in. My concerns about the parameters of this bid packet, led me to believe, after reading them, that this isn't in the best interest of the city or its citizens. I asked for a mechanism from the Solicitor's Office on how to reject the bid. I was told that counsel does not have the authority to reject the bid. So I'm left with no choice but to reject the contract. So that's why I, I'm voting no.
All right, on with roll call. Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Brennan? This resolution fails to adopt by yeas three, nays four. That takes us into new business.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any separations? Seeing none, if we could vote on-
All right. Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Heran Kunso. Mr. Jones. Mr. Kwiatowski. Mr. Mersky. Mr. Winarski. Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Brennan. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, um, let's start with, um, Mr. Witherspoon today.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First and foremost, I wanna thank, uh, everyone for the past weekend. It was a great weekend. I was honored and laid a surprise, the whole nine. Uh, the naming of the lane and it, it was, it was just outstanding job by everyone and appreciate, uh, the mayor and Jill and members from the clerk office, uh, and council who could attend. And the weather held out for us, a good day, and the people in the community had, uh, an outstanding, uh, day, outstanding weekend. Again, I appreciate everything everyone have done. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. Um, I had the distinct honor and privilege of presenting a citation from counsel to Vice Admiral Weschler. He is the highest ranking, uh, officer in Erie County history, and they honored him, uh, at Cathedral Prep Event Center. And they named a, um, a room for him at the new history center. So, um, I wanted to just publicly thank him for his service to our country and, um, the, the values that he learned in Erie, he took with him through his whole life and, um, he's a native son who did a job well done. Also, I attended the, um, I guest bartended for the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network, and I wanted to just bring attention to the work that the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network is doing. Both on the west side and now they have one on the east side. The sisters are in the heart of the city, getting their hands dirty, so to speak. Working with the people and working in some of our roughest neighborhoods. I encourage people to volunteer for their organization and to, um, donate to their organization. They're, they're changing, transforming Erie, um, one person at a time and, and, and one neighborhood at a time, and they're, they're doing some great work. And, um, just my final report, uh, we have a convention center meeting tomorrow, so I will have a report on that. In school, like I reminded everyone last time, school's back in session, so please be careful. As you drive, watch for the school buses, watch for the children. Because sometimes, you know, they, they don't look and we need to be alert. Also, follow those school zones. Our police will be out checking those school zones, so, um, don't speed through there. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Ms. Kunso?
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Um, just a couple of minor things, just wanted to follow up on what, um, Councilman Mersky said, welcoming the kids back to school. Hoping that everyone has a safe and productive school year and both the kids in, in the classroom and also uh, the drivers in the, in the streets watching out for our kids. Also wanna thank the Academy Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Watch. They are doing a beautification project. It's on our agenda today for an easement, for them to put some planters into the boulevards on State Street. So we just really want to thank the efforts of our neighborhood groups for doing what they can to beautify and take care of their neighborhoods and just be, uh, good neighbors. Just one other item, there was some mentioned today by one of our citizens about, um, employment statistic reports um, on some of the projects, public projects that are going on. I know, um, Mr. Mersky said he's going to the convention center. I do recall that in the past, we used to get reports from them on number of employees that were working on the project and some breakdown if they were city residents and stuff.
I, I do have that and I can get that to you. I do know, um, I can report that they are in compliance with what they said, um, in terms of minority hiring. They're, um, they're meeting their targets that they, that they submitted. And, um, I will get that electronically to everybody this afternoon.
Thank you. And also, I think that EMTA project may have a similar report that we could, um, have knowledge of for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kunso. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna first of all apologize for my tardiness, uh, two-hour meeting, uh, today. I'd made a, a commitment to, uh, some folks in the community, a family, uh, to cha- support them at a challenging time and not knowing that they would tell me at the same time as a council meeting, but I wanted to, to the best of my ability, honor both responsibilities, and so I was able to do that. So I appreciate everyone's, uh, understanding of that. Next, uh, we will be having a finance meeting today. Uh, the gist of it will be, uh, going over the uh, mid-year reports submitted by the mayor, uh, last month, uh, at our, our first of the month meeting. And so we will have, you know, having had some time to kinda digest that and look at some items and have some specific questions aligned up for this, for this conversation. That's what will be the, excuse me, the crux of our, uh, finance meeting today. Uh, next month, uh, what I'd like to do is, is have, um, and I'll make the ask, but I'll just kinda throw it out as well, Ms. Beck, if you would, from the administrative perspective. But I'll also talk to Andy Zimmerman. We had, had met with him a couple months ago around some, using our phrase of low-lying fruit, uh, to be able to generate some revenue out of his office, uh, looking at some fees. He had mentioned to us that there were some things that would, uh, that are very low, having been raised in X number of years, that we should really look at, uh, adjusting that with, that could help generate revenue, uh, for the city. So we would definitely do that, uh, with him. Also, uh, next month, we wanna ask, I will make the ask and for the parking authority, uh, to come and be a part of our, uh, next finance meeting. There, we had a study session, uh, with Ray and, uh, there were some things that came up that I think that we could probably uh, look into and investigate a little bit more, uh, that would, uh, generate some revenue for us as well, moving into the future years. Before you know it, it'll be budget session, and, and we do this every year. It'll be my tenth budget session, I think. And we get to October, November, and then, well, the end of, uh, October, moving into Thanksgiving time in November, and then we just start talking about budgets, so, uh, and revenue ideas. So hopefully, when we have been this year, kinda having more of those kinda dialogues and looking at different ways of generating revenue through study sessions, et cetera. So hopefully, we can start to think about that a little earlier, like now, uh, in a more intense way to, to have some substantive ideas to offer for our budget sessions this year. Also, uh, in relation to the students being back in school, uh, it's, it's a great thing. I'm sure a lot of parents are happy that the kids are back in school, and I, and I get all of that. There is an issue I'd like to raise with the administration, if I could, if we could have someone to look at, Twenty-Sixth Street, I believe it's P- Twenty-Sixth and Perry, near Wilson Middle School. Traffic is flying through there. I understand it's a middle school. It's seemingly a block away because of the big field between the school building, but hundreds of children travel that route, uh, going home to the north side of Twenty-Sixth Street. And, uh, I think a couple of years ago, maybe even last year, there was a student that was hit on, on East Twenty-Sixth Street. And, uh, we don't wanna see that again. There's a group, a community group that works, uh, the Blue Coats Program, they, they have some staff that are on that corner, and they actually almost have kinda become, um, crossing guards on steroids with stop signs and everything, and they're trying to help facilitate safe passage. But even with that, with the start of the new year, people have been flying all summer, and so they're still in those bad habits. So if there's a way we can maybe, you know, put a car there periodically, kind of randomly chirp the thing, the, the siren and, and hit the lights just so people recognize this is still a student area. We need to be, uh, cognizant of that. Uh, also, another issue, uh, there, some time ago, there was a concern I received from a citizen around a handicap sign, uh, being in front of their house. And I believe a neighbor had one. The neighbor, uh, who, who needed the sign or the, the accommodation of the sign passed away. The sign was removed. That neighbor says, "Well, hey, our sign's gone. Why do they still have theirs? They have a driveway." And then the neighbor says, "Well, we have different level hardship." It is this whole big thing. So, um, but what came up from that was a conversation that citizens who have driveways, unless they can show or prove some type of hard, and this hasn't been clarified in any way, but this was conversation, uh, that they were going to lose their handicap signs. Now, this citizen lost theirs, but just in, within a two or three block radius, there are multiple others who haven't. And so it's causing some, some other conversation that I don't want us to have to, to deal with in a negative way. So I'll give you more specific information. We can talk to whoever we need to talk to to see about justifying or fixing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no report this morning, just, uh, stating though, with the EMTA and Mike Tan, I'll try to set something up maybe in caucus for our next meeting. Just to give us an update with the, uh, project, I believe if they're not completed with phase one, they're within weeks of being completed. He can give us an update with that. Uh, looking forward to phase two. Any questions counsel may have during this project on a whole? As well as maybe we can even have him do a little presentation at the council meeting just to inform the general public of it. But other than that, we'll get a hold of him and I'll pass those, if that's gonna be doable with, uh, Mr. Tan, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yes, excuse me. It was great news and I see on the media the other day that the nuisance bar on East Twenty-Sixth Street is being addressed. As police lays on, I received numerous complaints about that. The fact that it lies behind a Erie City Middle School doesn't help the situation either. And I know I've been working with the police and they have been very good about it, and, uh, it's a shame that it took an act such as the other night to bring it to a head. So, uh, one of the things I've been doing for the last nine months has been working with our state legislators and the state on what we could do to hurry up the process. And thank God the district attorney and the police department locally have seen to that, so. It's not that I'm anti-business, but we don't need that kind of, we have people living around that, that bar that a gentleman showed me two nine-millimeter holes in his siding. I don't know how any of us would feel about it. Getting back to code enforcement, uh, it seems like, like maybe I should turn my complaints into the mayor's office. I'm not getting a adequate response from Mr. Zimmerman at times. You know, by the time, uh, some of these problems get done, winter will be here and we won't have to whack the weeds down any longer. But there's numerous properties that need to be addressed, weeds. We're not being very proactive. I don't know if that's a problem, but come budget time, it's gonna weigh on me how, how we look at his budget. I mean, if, uh, we've had numerous complaints from various council members. Uh, we gotta start doing something about it, uh. It's between, between the garbage, the, uh, uh, people are just not taking care of the property, putting the couches out. Situations with people parking illegally, it's just getting out of hand. And going along with the, uh, Curtis brought up about the parking authority, we talking about this, but once again, I know Bobby and I get this from our Neighborhood Watch days, they're complaining about the area, once again, around Mercyhurst. Maybe the fire chief needs to go up there and take a hard look at it because where we have parking on only, well, it's parking on two sides, it probably shouldn't be that way. They're parking there all weekend, everything, uh, it's impossible. I don't know how our garbage trucks get through there, but I, I can't imagine a fire truck would have an easy time, but it's starting to get to be, uh, a real problem and issue again. And also, we ordered a study, and so I hope that they're gonna do it now during the school year to see the full result. Would you wanna add something, Bob?
I just wanted to say, he, Mr. Kwiatowski's talking about Briggs Avenue. After four PM, the college kids know there's no enforcement, so they park on both sides even though it says no parking. They're, they're not stupid. They know that they're not gonna get ticketed. So what happens is, especially in the wintertime, but even with a larger vehicle, you can't get through. And that's what the neighbors in that Pin Oak, Woodbine Terrace, they pay high taxes and, and they can't even access, um, their properties in the wintertime. That's a concern. And for public safety.
It's a shame where, uh, our ordinance on curfew doesn't apply to college kids. As I can, I can tell you, again, woke up at one o'clock in the morning as they're traversing down my road to get back to their apartments and singing numerous songs like it's karaoke night. Gets a little frustrating. And finally, uh, my last comment will be, uh, I'm a little disappointed that this issue with the shelters got where it is. I want everybody to know I'm not pro-humane society nor anti-Anna shelter. It's merely about having been on the other side of the fence. And when I did bids here for a local company, we had the feeling like there was a good old boy network that existed here. That things weren't as they always appeared to be. And we, yes, we did have the right to question certain things as to substitution materials and various things, and that was explained to you. But either our word is gonna matter or it doesn't matter, cause I'm hearing out there from some people that, why should I submit a bid? I don't know if it's gonna be concrete and accepted. We teach kids every day that there are rules, there are laws, and yes, we can, and yes, the legal department did issue what I called a, the first time, a kind of a vanilla response, which kinda said we could do a rejection, but it didn't, much like the Second Amendment and other amendments and rules, we don't always read the entire rule in its whole context. We must have a valid reason. I didn't think one existed, and that's why I voted away I did. But being that there's an issue now about expenses, which I have been concerned about for years, since we are worried about our police officers traveling to Mill Creek, my suggestion is during budget session, all those cars not covered by the ordinance. Maybe the time we take them back in and rule them in, they don't take them home at night. Cause I'm sure we spend more than three thousand dollars running police cars home for people that are not, that's my time, that are not on the list of authorized personnel by city ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kwiatowski. Thank you for the alarm also. Ms. Tankovich, any report today?
Just wanna let, uh, council know that, uh, the pension plans are currently working on their audits and they'll be done hopefully soon here, and when they are done, complete, I'll let everybody know that, and if they wanna review them, they can. They'll be in the office, but they are working on it the way they're supposed to be, so. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Beck, any report from the administration?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. A couple, um, issues for Public Works and Andy Zimmerman, so I will certainly be addressing those. And not feeling well. I have no other, um, comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to, uh, bring up a couple of issues. I, I do wanna talk about the Humane Society contract just for a second. I agree with Councilman Kwiatowski, uh, on the issue. And really, I, I think, um, it's really the integrity of the, the bidding process. Myself, being the constru- in the construction and architecture industry, I, I do bidding, uh, every, every week, and I think there's a process in place and we follow it, uh, and the procedure, so I definitely agree, and I've always stuck to the, uh, approving this, this contract, uh, as, as is and, and keeping to the bidding process. Uh, I also wanna talk about the, um, McBride v. Dr. Vogt, uh, today. Uh, we didn't have any discussion on it, but I just wanted to mention it was a, I got several phone calls about this particular issue. Uh, it's a procedural resolution to execute a reimbursement agreement for the final design of the engineering services. I got a lot of questions. People thought it was, okay, it's just a, a resolution to tear down the bridge or not or whatever. But I wanna, yeah, I wanna just put that out there and I'll make a couple of phone calls, cause I stuck with a couple of phone calls that people, uh, wanna follow up on. But again, the, uh, the construction will come later. The design is, uh, will be starting soon. That's what this, this, uh, resolution was for. Uh, and then construct, we wouldn't have any construction until after the design is completed. Um, I wanna talk about a couple of events I attended. I attended the Witherspoon Lane dedication event. Uh, again, congratulations, Councilman Witherspoon. Again, the dedication was really to honor, uh, Councilman Witherspoon's, um, service to, as the founder of the, the Spoons Basketball League, so again, congratulations. Uh, I also participated, uh, with Councilman Mersky and the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network fundraiser. Again, great organization, great work, um, and they're doing, doing some good things, uh, in, in both the, uh, east side and west side of, of Erie, in the areas that we really, really need attention. need attention. Um, some upcoming meetings, we have, um, a study session with the Erie Downtown Partnership tomorrow night at five-thirty, to the, uh, continued discussions on a downtown master plan, I'm sure we're getting updates, so John Bookner will be here, and also their consultant. Um, the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry? The tenth, I'm sorry. It's the tenth. There's so many meetings lately, I, I missed, thank you. Thank you. I won't be here tomorrow night, so thank you for, for that correction. Uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, there's public meetings coming up September ninth at the Jefferson Elementary School at six PM, and September tenth at East High School at six PM. And again, this meeting is for the public to give their input. Um, I also want to let everybody know that, uh, Erie nine-eleven Memorial is having a memorial service on September eleventh at noon, uh, at the memorial in front of the library. Uh, there'll be several, several speakers, so it'll be, uh, I'm, I'm sure, a nice, nice event to dedicate, uh, not dedicate the memorial, but again, continue the, the discussion and the remembrance. And also, we have a, uh, curfew town hall meeting, uh, that was kind of coordinated by Councilman Jones, again, thank you for that, on September fourteenth at six PM at the MLK Center. Um, so we'll have a discussion, again, that was, uh, brought up during our, uh, citizens be heard and, and some other, uh, communications afterwards, they wanted to have a, a discussion, and of course, we want to continue the discussion to get, uh, get further input. Uh, and with that, that is, and my report, and that will end the meeting. Thank you.
City Council, Jurna, ten oh one AM. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski-
MLK? Six o'clock on the floor.